There should be a fair view to that. I'll have to look at the schedule.
You see the break?
They they start.
You can speak there on the floor. You can speak to work.
I know you're not here. You get now.
That's what you have to speak to.
Okay.
Okay, okay. My name was so wonderful. So.
I wish my grandbaby could live the house.
I did. I'm getting splopped here. But I want to go see something.
I'm too good.
Well, um, I wish my grandbaby could live the house. Got one that really nice and good. Well. On the weekends occasionally. And bless her heart, she she thinks it's a day. You see, I have any rhythm of the heart. Could you tell me? Uh, what?
Good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock. And I would just ask that you please stand for our invocation that's going to be given by Reverend William Poole of Outreach Ministries, but he's also a chaplain of our police department. And if you will still remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Reverend Poole, if you would.
All those that are willing to pray, please bow your heads. Father God, in the mighty name of Jesus, we thank you for, Father God, our leadership on this morning. We thank you for a brand-new day. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we pray for our Board of Commissioners. We pray for all of our county leaders. We pray for our police department, all of our leaders, all the citizens of Henry County, Father God. We pray and ask that you will help this meeting. We ask that you would give our leaders, the Board of Commissioners, the spirit of wisdom and understanding, the spirit of counsel and might. Father God, give them the courage to make the correct decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners is now called to order. We now call for a motion to accept the agenda as published. But before we do that, are there any revisions or suggestions for change on the agenda? Hearing none, we now call for a motion to accept the agenda as published.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions, changes, or revisions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The agenda is approved as published. We'll now move into our proclamations and we'll ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to come forth to present our Alzheimer's of the Month proclamation.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairment and is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States with no known prevention. And whereas more than 5.7 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's disease, including 140,000 Georgians, with Georgia ranked in the top five states for projection of Alzheimer's prevalence in the next 10 years. And whereas volunteer caregivers bear an extraordinary burden in caring for loved ones, and in 2017, more than 16 million caregivers provided over 18 billion hours of unpaid care for those with Alzheimer's and other dementia-related diseases. In Georgia, nearly 519,000 family caregivers provided 591 million hours of unpaid care valued at an estimated $7.48 billion. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association estimates the direct cost of caring for those with Alzheimer's to the United States in 2018 at $277 billion. And whereas, with awareness comes hope. And the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the efforts of the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Alzheimer's disease and other dementias, thereby providing quality of life for both patients and their caregivers. And whereas, the city of McDonough serves as the host location for the Henry County Walk to End Alzheimer's in Henry County, and Henry County has a longstanding commitment to supporting the efforts of Alzheimer's awareness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners recognizes the month of June as Alzheimer's and Brain Disease Awareness Month and urges all residents to learn more about brain health and to wear purple throughout the month to help spread global awareness of the Alzheimer's Association's vision of a world without Alzheimer's disease. This fifth day of June 2018, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have some members of the Henry County Walk to End Alzheimer's with us today for a picture.
Okay, thank you. We will join you for the picture. Well, thank you much. And I understand that the Alzheimer's Walk is going to be the last Saturday in September at the New Alexander Park. And starting at what time?
Eight o'clock registration.
Okay, eight o'clock registration. And we'll keep in mind about the purple as well. But we do, we'll keep all the families and patients of Alzheimer's in thoughts and prayers. Thank you much for being here. Well, thank you. We will now move to our next item regarding the reappointment to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board. We have a resolution which is reappointing Robert J. Head to serve another term on the Department of Family and Children's Services Board effective immediately and will expire June 30th, 2023. We now call for a motion from the Board. So moved. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Are there questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move to our consent agenda items, and we have several. One, from the Public Works, and this is regarding a resolution to approve the list of roadways for use of speed-detection devices. From EMA, we have two. One of those is a resolution authorizing the application for hazard mitigation grant to implement early warning weather radios to critical areas of our population. And also a resolution accepting funding in the amount of $32,829 for the FY 2018 through the Emergency Management Performance Grant with the Emergency, Georgia Emergency Management Agency. For public safety, we also have a resolution accepting a grant from the Georgia Trauma Commission in the amount of $22,562 to purchase equipment, supplies, and funding for EMS related to training. Are any of these items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion for the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is now approved, and this ends our consent agenda. We'll now move into item eight from our public safety team regarding a resolution to accept a grant from the Georgia TIME Task Force. And we'll ask our interim Fire Chief Luther Phillips if he would come to make that presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to come up before you speak this morning about this very important grant. Prior to getting started on the specifics of the grant, I would like to thank everyone for the support that we get with our grants. We understand that there are initiatives in the Fire Department, safety initiatives and other initiatives that we can fund through grants, and we aggressively pursue that at every opportunity. And we are supported in that. And I want to thank you for that upfront. The grant we're talking about today is from the TIME Task Force, which is the Traffic Incident Management Enhancement Task Force. They started working with us and with our community, other communities, when they started building the express lane down I-75. And what the purpose of this was is to have the best solutions for if there's an incident inside of that managed lane, to handle it efficiently and quickly and safely, especially for us. Our concern, of course, is for our safety and for the safety of the citizens and visitors traveling through there. And so this grant is very important to us. What this grant will allow us to purchase are 36 sets of collapsible cones. There are five in each set. Right now, on our fire apparatus, all of which have cones, the numbers are uneven. Some, I did some research, some have five, four, seven. It's up and down. Furthermore, the storage of those cones is all over the trucks. Some are in compartments. Engine 7, for instance, if you see it, it's on 155. Engine 7 has their cones sitting in their hose well right in front of the truck. Some have their cones inside of the cab with them, inside of the truck. So the collapsible cones, the only way they give us enough to put on every piece of fire apparatus that we have frontline and reserve, they're collapsible in a small enough package that we can store them inside of the compartment on every piece of apparatus. Additionally, they're giving us 62 LED flare kits. There are three in each one of those. Those LED flare kits will also go, two will go on every frontline apparatus, including our battalion vehicles, including our road chiefs. And it will allow us to extend our distance. Again, about our distance, if I may, those five cones that we have in our trucks, we put those eight feet apart when we set up on a roadway to protect us. That gives us 40 feet of protection. Forty feet of protection, that is not nearly enough. That's not nearly safe enough. The LED flares, because of the way they're made and the brightness of them, will allow us to extend that another 60 feet. So we'll have a full 100-foot of protection while we're working on roadways. Now, the importance of this, we're also getting 352 safety vests. And these are ANSI-approved, FHA-approved safety vests for us, which is a tremendous, a tremendous gift to us. And it'll allow every member of our department to get a brand-new vest. The reason why these are important is, on our daily commutes, as we're driving around the county every day, there are things that we expect to see. You always see this particular house or particular sign. What you don't expect to see is a fire truck or an ambulance in the roadway. And that's if you're paying attention to it. At 45 miles per hour, it takes you 49 and a half feet to react to what you're seeing. Once you start braking, it takes you 121 feet to brake. It takes 170 feet for you to come to a total stop. And this is for a driver that is engaged in what they're doing. For a distracted driver, that distance is a lot farther. 45 miles per hour is easily attainable on many of the surface streets in Henry County. And so as you're coming around a bend and see a fire truck with 40 feet of cones, and you start to brake, by the time you're done, you're on the other side of the truck. So it's very important to us to be able to warn drivers as quickly as we can. Highway speeds at 60 mile per hour, if you can imagine, that number's even greater. It's a total stopping distance of 241 and a half feet once you recognize that there are emergency vehicles in the roadway. So we plan on taking full advantage of this if we can, and we will continue to seek grant funding for some of our projects and our initiatives. Have any questions?
Thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? My only comment is that I am glad to hear that we are pursuing grants, especially those that do not require match, which means that it does not impact our general fund. So we, again, kudos to those that are applying for the grants that help us get the safety apparatus that we need. So thank you very much. Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is approved. We're now moving to our facilities maintenance request regarding the bid for HVAC maintenance and repair. And we'll ask Mr. Purvis to begin in that presentation.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have with me Chris Matthews. He's the Assistant Director of Facility Maintenance. He's here to help answer any questions y'all may have. The Purchasing Department solicited sealed bids from qualified licensed vendors to provide preventive maintenance services and repairs for the heating and cooling systems and related vent fans located at various county buildings on a renewable contract basis. Bid 18-28 was posted on websites of the county, ACCG, GLGA, and Team Georgia Marketplace. Five bids were received. Please see the bid attachment. Staff recommends approval of the awarded bid 18-428 for HVAC maintenance and repairs for various county facilities to the lowest bidder. And that's Georgia HVAC experts in the amount of $145,821 annually. This is a unit-priced contract with no fixed quantities for one year with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. The county shall not be bound to purchase a minimum quantity or restrict to a maximum quantity during the initial contract agreement period and any subsequent renewals. The county may add or remove locations, units, as required, and costs shall be negotiated in accordance with the bid prices. Funds are available in the facility maintenance bid for this service.
Okay.
Any questions?
We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Barn?
Yes, I more or less have a comment. After, when we had brought this up in the workshop, I know some of us had some questions about it. But after further speaking with Hutch about this matter, I think this is a good deal. And I think it's appropriate to move forward.
Okay, just to clarify for those that may not have been in the workshop, can we clarify what the questions or concerns were about this particular contract? It was actually the itemization. I know we were interested in what part was labor and what was equipment, so.
This is the HVAC maintenance and repair checklist report that we will get back from the contractor twice a year, typically in the spring and the fall. The fall will be the wintertime startup on all of our HVAC equipment. It's going to go in and check all the safety components. It's gonna, we're gonna have all of our amp draw readings on our compressors, on our fan motors, things of that nature. Then in the summertime, of course, we'll be checking our refrigerant levels and verifying the systems are clean and that the coals have been properly maintained.
Okay.
And there'll be, there'll be four trips that the contractor makes a year. There'll be in-between the trips where they actually fill out the reports on the equipment, there'll be filter changes between them. So four filter changes per year.
Okay. Commissioner Barn?
Yeah, I think what the question was, was that total number, the $143,851. And we, some of us had some reservations about that. But then after it get broke down, the material, the materials was 87,000 of that. So labor was around 58,000. Add another person, it was going to cost an additional 13,000. So I think contracting this out is the right way to go.
Okay.
That's correct.
Other questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve this facility maintenance.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And there's a second. Any other questions or comments or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. We're now moving to our resolution regarding the fireworks for the Fourth of July. And we'll ask Mr. Rod Gray to make that presentation from Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Misses.
Good morning.
This morning, I have an item to present to you for. An outside group called Henry County Fireworks has expressed an interest to host the Fourth of July Fireworks Festival at Warren Holder Park in the city of Locust Grove. Henry County Fireworks is partnering with the city of Locust Grove to host this festival. Atlanta Pirate Technics International has agreed to provide the exhibition fireworks display for the July 4th celebration. The launch site will be on Henry County property at the Locust Grove Event Center parking lot. Per the Henry County Code, it shall be unlawful for any person to use or possess fireworks without the permission of the Board of Commissioners. A permit issued by the Henry County Probate Court to conduct the fireworks display is also required, and a certificate of insurance is required. Henry County Fire Department has examined and approved the fireworks plan. The recommendation is to approve this fireworks show pending the approval of the permit from the probate court and the submittal of the certificate of insurance in the amount of $2 million as listed on the resolution.
Okay, thank you. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
For the insurance, would you guys be getting that? Or who would approve that or make sure that that's in place?
We could receive it. We would turn it over to risk management. But yes, we would, we would make sure that we got the insurance in the amount of $2 million.
Is there a deadline to have that in?
Commissioner Clemens, we would actually require that that insurance liability be provided to the county prior to the event. So if the Board does elect to approve it this morning, you all can put a date specific in terms of when you want to make sure that that insurance liability is in place. But we will make sure that we do receive it prior to the event.
And I think it's a great idea. I'm excited about it. Kudos to the group for bringing this back to the county. Very supportive of it. But I do think that we need to put a date for the insurance because the liability is really the only concern that I have.
They have submitted a proof of insurance that they can get the insurance in that amount, but we'll set a deadline so that we receive it in plenty of time before the event so we can verify everything on their certificate.
I would like for you to add a date in it so that we can add it into the resolution and just so that they'll, at least that'll give them something. I don't want them to wait till the last minute. They don't know. If you give them a date, then that kind of gives the group an opportunity to be aggressive with getting it taken care of and getting it into us.
What about June 15th?
I don't mind it if the Board will approve the rest of it. That's a good date.
That's a little over a week. That gives them plenty of time to get it in order and get it submitted to us.
Okay, that's good.
June 15th?
Okay.
Yes, okay. I request to amend the resolution in the "Be it Further Resolved" section to following amount of $2 million received by the close of business on June 15th.
Sounds good. Before we finalize, I'd make sure, are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay. All right, very good. So yes, we have that amendment to the resolution with the date of June 15th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then Chair, just one additional modification to the resolution. We did receive an email from Locust Grove this morning indicating that their city council did reaffirm the approval for the fireworks pending the approval from the Board of Commissioners. So if we could just modify the resolution where it currently says, be it resolved, that pending approval from the city of Locust Grove, that has already been done. It was on yesterday. Yes.
Okay. All right, again, we have a second amendment to this resolution. One regarding the June 15th date regarding the liability insurance. And again, to revise the resolution stating that it has been approved by the city of Locust Grove. All right, any other?
And what do we do about police officers? How is that working?
That is, and. Through the city of Locust Grove because it is a city park. So they have gone through a special event, not only with the county for the fireworks portion, but they've also met with the city of Locust Grove and their staff. And so Locust Grove will handle all of the public safety. Now, our Fire Department will handle the fire portion of it, and that has been communicated amongst the group and with our Fire Department.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution, the amended resolution is approved. We're now moving to our next resolution from our Transit Department regarding the approval of the purchase of 13-passenger vans. And we'll ask Mr. Ty Salters for that presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Resolution 1895 was approved May 1st, 2018 in the amount of $154,589.76, which required a 20% match in the amount of $30,009.17.95. But additional options to the state contract were needed, and the purchase price has been increased to $175,562.76, which requires a 20% match of $35,112.55. The amendment will allow for additional modifications in equipment that will give the buses the ability to accommodate up to four wheelchairs at a time. These vehicles also will not require a driver to possess a commercial driver's license to operate the vehicle.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments for this resolution? Okay, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to our next items under SPOLOST, item 12. And this is regarding some resolutions. We've got two resolutions, but the first one is regarding the creation of a SPOLOST 5 Committee. And we'll ask Mr. Rocky Romero and also Mr. Ron Burkhalter for this presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning.
The current Henry County Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, or SPOLOST, is set to expire in 2020. The Henry County Board Commissioner needs to explore whether to issue a call for voter referendum for the continuation of the SPOLOST program. Should the SPOLOST program be placed on the ballot, it's necessary to formulate an estimate of the amounts of potential resources to be generated by the additional SPOLOST. Should the SPOLOST program be placed on the ballot, it is necessary to formulate a list of projects to be presented to the voters. The Board should appoint a committee of citizens to serve as the SPOLOST 5 Committee to assist in this endeavor. The SPOLOST 5 Committee shall be composed of members to be appointed as follows. One member appointed by each of the five Board of Commissioners, one by the county manager, one by the chairman, and one member appointed by the Henry County Municipal Association. Staff is recommending 17 meetings starting July 19th of this year and ending prior to June 30th of 2019, giving us time enough to be in the ballot of November of 2019. This will be a continuation. It's not going to be a new sales tax. It'll be the same, same percent, 1% sales tax. And if it passed, it will just continue without, without having to stop. Take any questions at this moment?
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments regarding this resolution? Okay. Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is approved. All right, we do have also another resolution regarding the SPOLOST 4 calendar for 2018 for the countywide and district project budgets. And again, we invite you both for that presentation.
Thank you, Chair. In November of 2013, the voters of Henry County voted for SPOLOST 4 referendum. SPOLOST staff recommends approval of the attached 4, of the SPOLOST 4 2018 calendar year countywide and district project budgets. The total proposed SPOLOST 4 2018 budget is $49,463,688. The total cash on hand as of May 1st of 2018 was $23,334,574. The project SPOLOST, the projected SPOLOST 4 collection for this year, 2018, is $26,943,708 at the growth of 3.65%. That will give us a total of $51,519,623. Just to kind of give a, and I know we gave a presentation last year about the projects, just to give you a recap of the projects completed so far on the SPOLOST 4, while we get it up on the screen. We have completed so far 61 projects. Of the 61 projects, nine have been capital projects, countywide projects, as shown in the screen there. Next, District 2, I'm sorry, District 1, we have completed 20 projects so far. And there's the list of projects that includes capital and transportation. District 2, we have completed 26 projects. District 2, we have completed 26 projects. On this list that you see in the screen does not include resurfacing or surface treatment. So if you count those, we've done probably over 30 or plus projects on those as well. So this is just specific projects that were in the list, not including the resurfacing or the surface treatment. District 3, we have completed, like I mentioned, 26. District 4, we have completed 14. I'm sorry, 4. Six, sorry about that. And District 4, we've completed six projects. And District 5, we've completed four. And that's, those are the projects. Of course, we've got a lot of projects still under construction. We've got some roundabouts. We're still working on Jodico at Black Hole that's moving along. We finally, we finally got, this week, the rain has stopped, so we should be able to, and hopefully stay like this for a while. I think for the last two months, seems like it's been raining every day or every other day. So I know Jodico, Black Hole, we're working on it. The campground project is moving along pretty good. The bridge is completed on that project. So once the utilities are, they're just about being done. So we'll see a lot of projects being completed this year. Same thing with, we have a roundabout on District 1 that we're waiting on some utilities to relocate on South Bethany and Old Jackson. So hopefully those will be completed this, this fall, and we'll, somewhere around fall time, we'll come back and we'll provide an update of all the projects completed for this year so far.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion regarding the approval of the SPOS 4 calendar for the 2018 countywide and district projects. Calling again, is there a motion to approve the resolution that has been presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is approved. We're now moving to our technology item regarding the resolution regarding the replacement of the fiber optic cable in that 345 Phillips Drive.
Good morning, Chair, board members.
Good morning. And I'm sorry to introduce you, Mr. Floyd, and also our deputy county manager, Brad Johnson. So welcome.
You want me to go? All right. As you may know, the building located at 345 Phillips Drive is in disrepair and needs to be demolished. The problem is the fiber optic network hub for the entire area is located in that building and needs to be moved before we take the building down. This resolution actually brings forth to allow us to run a single mode fiber from the admin building to the hardened jail area with 144 strand single mode fiber optic network, and then spiderweb out of that hardened building to all the locations in the area. This also includes bringing sentence enforcement into our network and taking them off of that charter network that's currently being run there. This also provides a disaster recovery link between this building and the jail training area that we've been looking for and a short run at our disaster recovery site located at the police department. The replacement fiber mount is for $247,890. The resolution seeks a budget transfer of $300,000 to cover the fiber replacement and demolition of the building if it's not handled internally by the county. Comtech is currently our fiber optic provider at contract number HC 17-52.
I could add some simple terms for that that Skip was telling us. One of the things that came to us, this is part of our capital projects list we're working on to bring forward for the commission in the near future. However, if you know, our DOT building had a fiber issue a few, about a month ago now. They've been relocated to an offsite at our 911 center office because the building has no communications. That fiber breakdown because made this an emergency, number one, for that fiber run that cannot be repaired in that building, and this would fix that. Number two is the information from our facilities maintenance that we've had a different shift in the, in the ground over there, and the building has actually shifted more, has become a danger at that facility also. So at this time, we are bringing this emergency request to you to remove the fiber from that building, which in turn has to be done anyway because that is a hub for our whole worksite, work camp road area for all our facilities over there. But in turn, that would repair our DOT building, get them back in their office where they should be. It would also, as a extra, would actually improve or replace the fibers for our building where sentence enforcement is. So that's why we're bringing it today and not waiting on a capital improvement. We do have some, some very concern for safety at that building and getting our major hub out of there, relocated into a safe area.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? I just have one request that may not be, need to be addressed today, but I do look forward to when we're going to have the comprehensive facilities plan. And I know that that's going to proceed, hopefully, our capital budget because we need to know what the plan is.
Exactly.
And all of this ties in, and I do understand that this is an emergency. But again, looking forward to the comprehensive facilities plan.
Yes, ma'am, we're seeing.
Okay. All right. Very good. Commissioner Wilson?
Skip, this bid, is this the same bid, the same amount that they offered a year and a half ago?
Yes.
So they honored that?
Yes, sir. And we added the two other runs to the jail to this. So we're actually adding an additional almost 3,000 feet, well, not quite 3,000 feet of fiber between this building and the jail. So.
Did they give you a timeline when this could be completed?
It depends on the availability of fiber, but it, it could be as little as a couple of weeks before it's done.
We haven't made contact, Commissioner. They are on the list. If it gets approved today to move forward, they will expedite. Skip's teams are working to expedite getting us back so we can get our services back up and ordered in the area.
Okay, the next question is about the demolition of the building.
Yes.
When will that take place?
As soon as they get the fiber out of the building. The $300,000 for demolition cost, they would not honor that same quote that we had. So we're looking in-house to take that, that money. We don't believe it'll cost that much. We want contingency there. We will come back before the board for anything unused out of that, that funding that we do in-house to transfer back over to our fund balance at that time. It can only be used for that amount. But as soon as the, the fiber gets removed, we want that building down. We have a great concern about the safety in that building. Number one, people going inside the building, the fencing around it is secure, but getting stuff we need out of it. If they have an issue in work camp, Skip's team has to go in that building now and actually make repairs, which is not advantageous for safety. And so as soon as that fiber, I guess the short answer, as soon as that fiber is moved, the public works team will, will do that. We will scrap and actually try to sell any, any scrap metal and everything we can out of there that is salvageable.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Barmuth, if you've got a point?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, I know we're going to take the building down, and it's long overdue. But my question is, is anything in that building salvageable, like the doors or anything in there that's salvageable?
They will go through and do a quick, they have taken most everything they can that is salvageable out. The mold issue in the very bottom of it is terrible. Getting actual crews going in, will have to be protected with Class B protection going into that building. But we will go through there. We just, we purchased a window unit, the building facilities maintenance team did, just two weeks ago for Locust Grove senior wall. Instead of buying one, they took a big plate glass, I guess, office window out of that facility. So they have been salvaging what they can. But we are, we're really concerned about safety.
And I know that we're, we're looking to do some additional buildings, but are we going to use this same footprint and try to go with another building at the same location?
There eventually will be part of facilities plan to have something else relocated there. For time being, it'll be sloped down, grassed over. The slab will remain in place, but we'll slope it down, make it look aesthetically nice.
So the slab could be reused.
If it fits our footprint, it'll go up later. It could be reused. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is approved. We're now moving to item 14 regarding the budget, and we'll ask our county manager, Sherri Matthews, Hopson Matthews, to make that presentation regarding the budget amendment to increase the use of fund balance regarding the airport funds.
Good morning, Chair and Board. You have a resolution before you this morning, and it is a resolution to amend our current fiscal year 1718 budget. As all of the board members should be aware, we've been in some conversations regarding the condemnation at the Atlanta Motor Speedway, and we have been successful in getting this case resolved. And so this is just an amendment to increase the use of fund balance to transfer to the airport in the amount of $2,360,000. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. The resolution is now approved. We're now moving to our public comments section, and we welcome citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions that are not listed on the agenda in a professional manner. We also ask that if you have any questions or concerns regarding a commissioner, that you please meet with them afterwards or schedule time to meet with them. And if you have issues or concerns regarding an employee, please speak with the county manager. But at this time, we just ask that again, that anyone wishing to speak, definitely, they were requested to sign in with the county clerk and complete the comment speaker form prior to the beginning of the meeting to be recognized. So at this time, county clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comments, which they will be given five minutes to speak?
We have one speaker signed up today, Major Alfred Williams.
Okay, we welcome Mr. Williams forward. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you.
For the record, state your name and address, please. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. My name is Major Alfred Williams, retired U.S. military from the Army, 27 years. In that time, I live at 188 Kendall in Hampton, Georgia. So again, I want to thank you for giving this opportunity to speak to you. One of the things I wanted to talk to you about is looking at, looking ahead and looking at what's going on with our youth. When I say our youth, I'm really looking at more of our ages 12 through the age of 18. In the Hampton area, we do not have a facility for that age group. We have a facility, Bear Creek, it's doing outstanding job with the seniors. It's doing outstanding job with the eight through 10, 11 years old age. But what we're hurting at is the ages of 12 up to the age of 18. We have no activity, no location for them to go to. Rather than just coming up here with a problem, we want to come and try to come to you with a solution. With community athletics, we feel that that is one way that we can address this problem. We need to make sure that they, the young adults have some type of supervision. How does this help and how does this affect the community? How it affects the town and how it affects the county? With the youth, this youth that's coming up of age, as they're growing up, they will become young voters. We need, we are losing track of them. We're losing track of them. As the younger kids, we have track of those. But as they're getting older, in that, that teen group, when they're going on their separate ways and want to be young adults, we're losing track. We have to regain accountability of this group. This group is going to be our new workforce. In order for us to make sure that they take advantage of the technical collar system and of the university system, we need to give them guidance. That guidance cannot come just from their parents. One, the statistics are going to show you, it's just a fact. As I said, we have no activities for the youth ages 12 to 18. We have no recreation for the youth 12 to 18. The poverty rate in that district is almost 30%. Therefore, that percentage would not be able to go to any type of administrative, AAU or any other type of private organization. We got to look and see what we're going to do with that 30%. 30% of a population is very large. That's half the population in that area. If we look at, looking at community athletics, that may be a source of way to do it. Also, I know that the county is looking at funding. But we may want to think about looking at some of the churches, that we can rent a church, similar to what we did in Locust Grove, in order to occupy, use that part, that building for a youth activity location until we can get the funding. I moved out in Hampton back in 2007 because I thought the high school was going to be built. My kids graduated from high school before that ever happened. The youth center did not happen. All these kids have continued to graduate and move on. What are we going to do about it? We need to start thinking about it instead of just saying, hey, it's a lot of country out there. Let them run wild. If they run wild, they go straight to our police force. We do not need to have all these kids own with police records for doing stupid stuff. We need to address the problem. West of 75 is a very large area, but we have no activities west of 75, other than the private organizations, which again, the poverty rate is 20, almost 30%. They can't afford it. That's what I wanted to address with you. I hope you can think about it. I know I've sent a letter up to the county, hoping the county got it out to everybody so you can look at it. But we need to try to come up with a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, thank you. Well, that concludes our public comments section. And so at this point now, we'll move to our next agenda item regarding the approval for amendments for our April 24 workshop meeting and also our May 1 regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any revisions or changes to those amendments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other questions or comments regarding the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We're now move to our commissioner comments section. Are there any commissioners that care for any comments? Commissioner Clemens?
I just wanted to take this moment to thank some DOT members for their quick response to dealing with the site distance issue at Flippin and Jodico. It was Johnny Barclay and Johnny Holland. You know, oftentimes, our constituents complain about stuff not getting done. I know that they were contacted about a site distance issue, and the way their response came back to the constituent, she was just overwhelmed with the service and how they handled it. So if you guys will let them know that I did mention them today and thank them for getting on that right away. And then today, you guys see, girls, will you all stand up for me? I have 40 girls for eight weeks. This week is Girls in Government Week, and we are here for the local day today, working and discussing leadership and service and the Equal Rights Amendment. Our mission this week is to make sure that the girls know that they too can be part of service in their community. Hey, girls! So tomorrow, we will be at the Capitol for girls golf day, women's golf day at the Capitol. And then on Thursday, they will be doing a scavenger hunt downtown Atlanta, including the Capitol in our scavenger hunt and talking about the people that are in Henry County that work at the Capitol. So I just wanted to acknowledge you all. You all have done well today. And I'll see you all in a few hours, right? So I just wanted to say that. And then there was an email that I got, and I'll send it over to the county manager's office about an ABA league. I guess that's a lower level of basketball league, and it's ABA. I'm not familiar with ABA is. But the commissioner of that league sent an email saying that they are starting an ABA league in Henry County. So I'll send that over. So that's exciting, that we will probably have a semi-pro basketball league. And I know that Mr. Alfred Williams is talking to the guys with that, and it's a former ABA player that lives in our county that's the owner of the league. So as I get more information, I'll share that with you guys.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? I have two I'd like to make. Okay. Well, hearing none, I did want to share with our board and also with the public, there's been lots of concerns regarding human trafficking, specifically here in Henry County. And in addition to the concerns that I know that we've heard from some of our constituents, the chair of Platoon County and also the chair of Fayette County, we all were invited to an interview with the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. And I want to share with you some of the information that I discussed. information that I discovered in preparations to listening to our constituents and also in preparation for that interview. I did speak with our District Attorney, I spoke with our Sheriff, our Police Chief, and this is what we have stated. Basically, over the less, over the last three years, there has been three confirmed human trafficking cases here in Henry County. Let me restate that. According to the data that have been shared with our law enforcement leaders, there has been three confirmed human trafficking cases over the last three years. There was one that we thought we had recently, but again, it was a Clayton County related issue. The issues that we are seeing here in our community are more related to child molestation, drug addictions, and overdoses. These are issues that our law enforcement are experiencing. Yes, we, there are some issues with prostitution here in some of the hotels, and our law enforcement is very much involved in that. Definitely regarding the drug task force, they are very much involved in that, but there are opportunities that our police and law enforcement, including our sheriffs, have taken advantage of. They have been proactive and taken advantage of the Blue Campaign information, which trains our officers on what to look for regarding human trafficking. Are there symptoms that, that are discovered? So that information is being, are being released. Our law enforcement is being, continuing to be proactive. I will tell you, yes, we do need more resources so that we can remain proactive. The other thing is, just recently, as a matter of fact, on yesterday, there was a joint discussion with a lot of our District Attorney, along with our Police Department and also our Sheriff, about how do we remain proactive regarding public safety and health? And so there are going to be some discussions about what messaging that we will have going forward so that we can continue to keep our community educated about what is being done regarding the public safety and health now, and even as we prepare for the continued growth. So do expect more information to come in that regard, but I did want to at least share that information with you. In the discussion we had with the Chair of Clayton County and the Chair of Fayette County, we will continue to look for opportunities to share resources and expertise on how we as a region can continue to address some of the trends that we're seeing, not just in human trafficking, but other areas that will, again, of concern to our citizens. So I wanted to share that information with the Board. Of course, if there is any other questions or comments, feel free to, to reach out to me, I'd be more than happy to share more details. The other thing is, there was recently a transit town hall meeting that was here. We want to thank our citizens that participated in that town hall meeting. Again, a lot of the focus of that conversation was how does transit fit within our comprehensive transportation improvement plan? And in light of the recent HB nine-thirty legislation that was approved by our legislators to link our current transits with all the other transit systems here in the metro Atlanta area, that was discussed. And again, how do you prepare for future plans for transit over the next ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, where we want it, where we don't want it? So we encourage those of you who did not make it to that town hall meeting to please go online. That information is definitely presented there, the recording of that town hall meeting is there. We did have the Atlanta Region Commission that addressed questions to, and clarifications about this new legislation. We also had Dana Lemon, who was part of that discussion, to, to speak a lot about planning and future planning, so that Henry County has a seat for its future. And then we also had Charlotte Nash, who's the Chair of Gwinnett, to come and speak regarding the growth opportunities. And one of the things that I, I gravitated to what she said, she says at least Henry County has an opportunity to charter its future. And so again, you will hear more conversations about that. So those are my comments for today. Are there any others from any of the other Commissioners? Hearing none, we'll now ask the County Manager, do you have any comments?
No comments this morning, Chair.
Okay. So we'll then move into our upcoming meetings and events. On June nineteenth, there will be our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at six-thirty PM. On June twenty-sixth, at nine o'clock AM, is our regularly scheduled workshop meeting. I'll look now to our County Attorney. Oh, I'm sorry, I see our hand raised by the County.
Chair, would we do have an annexation that we need to read into the record and make the Board aware of? So I'll ask Dante Gibbs to come forward now, just to read into the record and annexation from the city of Locust Grove.
Okay. Well, do I have a motion from the Board to amend the agenda to include that? Do I need to do that?
It's covered under the County Attorney, or County Manager comments.
Okay. Okay. All right. So this is under the County Manager's comments. Okay. Mr. Gibbs, for your presentation.
Good morning Chair and Commissioners. Very briefly, the city of Locust Grove rendered a notice of annexation for property located at Harris Drive and Highway forty-two North. There are three tracts, or three parcels of land that are currently zoned commercial. It is their intent to keep those parcels zoned commercial. And let me turn the zoning map a little bit differently, so you can see. At the tip of my pen is where the three tracts of land are located. As far as the, the contingency law requirements for annexations and annexing parcels from unincorporated areas into incorporated cities, it abuts the actual city limits of the city of Locust Grove, which is colored in green on the map. I think that's green, maybe it's kind of a blue-green. But nevertheless, it does meet the contingency requirements, and staff does not have any objection to this with respect to the annexation law.
Okay. So we've heard the.
No action.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Well, we, we thank you for that information and update regarding that annexation. Okay? Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, County Attorney, do we have any items for the executive session?
We do need an executive session regarding pending and potential litigation.
Okay. All right. Well, we do have a request for an executive session. We now call for a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. We will now enter into executive session. Thank you, and thank you all for being here.